I know we've got a couple of presenters coming for item number one. I haven't seen them yet, and I know item number two might be lengthy. So let's go ahead and jump to item number two. That's a discussion of Act 2021-297, also known as SB 107, regarding the police jurisdiction, planning jurisdiction, and permitting jurisdiction in the agreement with Baldwin County. So who is taking that? Chris? Fire away, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Councilman. Appreciate y'all having me here this afternoon. And let me know in terms of timeline where we want to move. But generally, I want to give the council and everyone an update on the changes to the law based upon what's commonly referred to as SB 107, Act 2021-297, a local bill sponsored by Chris Elliott that has become law and is effective today. As y'all know, it has changed and impacted some of the planning and permitting jurisdictions of the city. And so just kind of want to talk through a couple of those changes with you real quick and then give you an update of where we are in terms of a potential agreement or negotiations with Baldwin County to determine and iron out some of the fine print and the details and what the planning and other jurisdictions may look like. So with the effectiveness of the law today, what was commonly referred to as the city's ETJ is basically dissolved or gone away. The extent of the planning jurisdiction for the Fairhope's Planning Commission, where subdivision regulations will be enforced, is now wrapped into generally what is called the police jurisdiction and was previously been known as the police jurisdiction of the city that was in place as of January of this year. And it's not exact, but that's roughly a boundary of approximately three miles, some places lower, some places, you know, within three miles of the corporate limits of the city, subject to some prior agreements and that sort of thing with the county. What that means is the footprint of the subdivision regulations is being reduced by this new law. There's also some additional changes to the planning jurisdiction under the law that include some timing mechanisms where Baldwin County, when provided notice, can step in and at some point in the future, take over all subdivision regulation outside of the corporate limits of the city, unless an agreement with Baldwin County is reached to modify and change that. And so that's something that's obviously notable. It cannot happen. There's a winding down period. And so unless another agreement is reached in July of 2023, Baldwin County potentially will have the ability to enforce subdivision regulations outside of the corporate limits of the city of Fairhope. So that's notable. So we are discussing and working with the county on potential agreements to see if that timeframe can be, you know, extended, if there's a bubble or a boundary that the county may consider in terms of allowing Fairhope and its planning jurisdiction to have subdivision regulation outside of the corporate limits. But that's all a work in progress and subject to some negotiations and some decisions by the council and Fairhope Planning Commission. In the police jurisdiction, again, roughly a bubble of about three miles, and that's not exact. But outside of the corporate limits of the city, there are certain ordinances that were being enforced by the city that can no longer be enforced by the city under this new law. Some of those laws include the sign ordinance, noise ordinances, some environmental, wetlands protections, red clay. And so outside of the corporate limits, as of today, the city will not be able to enforce some of those ordinances. There's an exception that applies to building codes. So the city still has the ability to enforce building code and handle building permit issuance outside of the corporate limits within the police jurisdiction for a window of time. Again, the law provides that there is the ability of the county to step in and enforce building codes and the issuance of building codes outside of the city's corporate limits, subject to a two-year winding down period. The city has not gotten notice yet that the county intends to do that, but that is something that the county, under the new law, may have the ability to do, again, subject to potential agreement with the county and the city over the city's ability to handle those type of things outside of the corporate limits. There are some other changes as well. I mean, the law is actually 10 pages. So I'm not going to go through the details of all of it with you. There are certain timing mechanisms in the law. Starting today, the effective date of the law, the planning jurisdiction of the city is reduced to the existence of basically the police jurisdiction, which is, again, roughly three miles. Starting January of 2023, that planning jurisdiction will be further reduced to one and a half miles outside of the corporate limits of the city. Again, subject to an agreement by the county, the city, and the city's planning commission. There's also what's commonly referred to as an exemption. The law specifically, outside of the corporate limits, allows certain defined family members to come before. And there's an exception in the law that states that the planning jurisdiction, in the police jurisdiction, subdivision regulations of the municipality shall not apply to certain types of transactions. Commonly, just on the street, you might hear it called a family subdivision or a family exemption outside of the corporate limits of the city. So the new law has a provision that says that outside of the corporate limits, Fairhope subdivision regulations will not apply to those type of specifically defined transactions. And then there's also a carve-out of that. There's a 24-month period where that can basically only happen once. If it happens more than once, then it would fall under the subdivision regulations of the city. So I know I've gone through a lot of detail. There's a lot of detail and nuance to the law. Generally, we're working toward potentially coming to you and the planning commission to try to get some guidance of how you want to try to proceed in terms of discussions with the county, what the long-term plan of the city would look like if you want a uniform boundary in terms of jurisdiction of both the police and the planning jurisdiction and the building permitting jurisdiction to all be uniform at some one mile, one and a half mile increment, and to see if that can be part of the agreement. There's the ability in the law to reduce the planning and the police jurisdiction under certain timeline requirements. And so that's another option for the city and the planning commission to consider as well. So.
Can you offer us anything on the reporting, what we have to report and how that impacts the county?
Certainly. So there are reporting obligations and accounting obligations that are set forth in the law as well. And I don't want to, I'm not going to quote it, but generally, the city's treasurer is responsible for collecting certain types of information of services that are provided outside of the corporate limits to the businesses and that sort of thing, and by services, usually, you know, fire protection and that sort of thing outside of the corporate limits. And there's a comparison done about the amount of money generated from licenses and other taxes outside of the corporate limits from businesses. And so there's an accounting obligation for the city to report to the state auditors in certain timelines what those numbers look like for a period of time, including some period of time that is this fiscal year, which even included some months that were before the law was even effective and before the city knew it needed to be tracking some of that data. But I understand the city's, you know, obviously going through the process of getting that information to address the accounting and the obligations as set forth in the new law.
And I wanted Chris to review that because we're going to be coming back before the council. Kim Creach is here, she can speak to it. But you have to spend the money you collect in the planning jurisdiction with those departments, specifically building. So we will probably be coming back to you to give you that number and ask you to spend some money.
Chris, just a couple of questions on the police, I mean, the planning jurisdiction being extended or reduced to a mile and a half up till January 2023, unless we come to an agreement. Otherwise, there's not an opportunity for the county to shrink that prior to that date, is there?
A little bit of a clarification, and I know I threw a lot at you. So from today to January 2020, January 1 of 2023, the planning jurisdiction of the city is the police jurisdiction, which is approximately three miles. And then, under the new law, on January 1, 2023, from three miles, give or take, it is reduced to a mile and a half, unless there's an agreement between the county and the city to modify that.
And technically, we're on probation right now for two years, right? As far as, I mean, is that not right? I mean, don't we have two years regardless?
That's a fair statement. So as of today, the county has sent a letter to all of the municipalities in the county, frankly. So this is, and all of the municipalities are dealing with different issues. And some of them aren't worried about these issues. They, based on their size, have different boundaries, jurisdictional limits. Some of them aren't doing the buildings. Some of them don't have ordinances, you know, that they're enforcing outside of the city limits anyway. But yes, Councilman Martin, to answer your question, the city has been provided notice that the county intends to take over subdivision regulations in July of 2023, outside of the corporate limits of the city, unless an additional agreement is made to modify that or there's some sort of litigation or change to the law that comes to be, to either challenge the law or, you know, the state further revises or clarifies the law.
And that's January 1, right? Not July?
No.
Tricky. No. So it is two years, two months, two years or 24 months from today.
Right.
Okay.
So again, from today until January 1 of 2023, the rough planning jurisdiction is the police jurisdiction approximately three miles. On January 1, 2023, to July of 2023, the planning jurisdiction is approximately a mile and a half. Unless another agreement is reached, starting July of 2023, there is no planning jurisdiction of the city of Fairhope. It would, all subdivision and everything else would be encompassed by the corporate limits of the city. And outside the corporate limits of the city, unless an agreement is reached or they change their mind, the county has at least stated at this time the intent to take over subdivision regulations.
All right. So next, I guess Hunter and Eric, any of these items that, as of today, are no longer in the city's jurisdiction? I guess y'all's staff is aware of that and knows to reroute these certain items to the county?
No, we're still. I don't have a.
I'm going to speak for Eric. Because a lot of those standalone ordinances are within the building department. So wetland ordinance, red soils, those things. But yes, we have, we are sending out to media, I think, getting a blurb out that will help to answer some of those questions and get those to the appropriate departments within the county. I know they've kind of been revising some of their codes. We're looking and seeing what we can incorporate into our subdivision regulations that we haven't already because we at least have those for two years. So we're doing what we can.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes. Let you know, we had a joint staff meeting this morning with planning, and there were three specific things that we typically look at that are no longer within our jurisdiction as of today. The city's wetland protection ordinance for anything that is outside the city limits, that enforcement ended today. There was also a, we call it a red clay and staining soils ordinance, where you're not allowed to have certain soils within a proximity to the bay to prevent pollution. That is no longer valid as of today. And what was it? Oh, the erosion and sediment control ordinance for construction. The way that the law reads, and I'm going to ask Chris to correct me if I'm wrong, you cannot enforce anything that is not adopted in a state statute. So we have a city-specific erosion control ordinance that's pretty strict. We cannot use the additional provisions in our ordinance outside the city limits. However, ADM has basic erosion control requirements that they've adopted through the state. So we are going to enforce or verify that those measures are, the minimum measures are at least taking place on any sites we have outside. And any violations, we've instructed our staffs that any violations we see of any of those, they will be deferred to either the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Alabama Department of Environmental Management. And then we do have some issues along the bay that would default to state lands with DCNR.
Thank you.
One addition outside of the ordinance is we are, starting today, acknowledging family subdivisions. So outside of our corporate limits. The procedures there, kind of as we see it, go back to the way they were a few years ago. If they get the exemption letter from the county, we recognize that and ask them to record, you know, they're free to go record that deed as they see fit.
Okay. Thank you.
Just very briefly, one thing that, I just checked with the mayor to see if we had the ability to pull it up. And Hunter's confirmed that we do. There was a discussion about potentially, at least evaluating what the jurisdictional limits would look like if we tried to make one uniform police and building permitting jurisdiction, kind of a singular, concrete kind of line that provides clarity to everyone, including, you know, the public. And so we prepared what is a working, kind of a working draft. It's subject to, you know, agreement and revisions potentially with some of the surrounding, you know, Daphne because their jurisdictional line is obviously, you know, approximate to us. But just roughly trying to get an idea of if the, we're off the probationary period or, you know, in 2023, if the limit of the planning jurisdiction was a mile and a half, roughly what that mile and a half would look like. And if the city wanted to take some steps to shrink it sooner rather than wait until January 2023, roughly what the mile and a half boundary would look like outside the corporate limits. Again, that's a working draft. There's.
And I'm sorry, this is not the one and a half. Let me kind of explain this, if you don't mind. This is our existing police jurisdiction, as we've been using since 2000, and shown with our corporate limits. So certainly, the police, the planning jurisdiction shrinks to this as of today. The one and a half mile, very roughly, closely mimics that. So in some areas, it's almost three miles. In some areas, it's under half a mile. And then on the north boundary, it's almost, it's zero. We butt up with Daphne in the Montrose area. So the green represents the one and a half mile that very closely mimics what our police jurisdiction is today, that I think we're looking at proposing, but need feedback from both council, planning commission departments in the county. And hopefully, we can come to an agreement on where that lands.
Given this question.
I'm getting a little confused.
Yes, sir.
Are our ordinances right now to 23 within a mile and a half or three miles of the city limits or just within the city limits?
It's fair to be confused based on this because it is confusing. And even reading the law, there's ambiguity. I think the best way to answer your question, though, is specifically, depends on the type of ordinance. So.
Actually, I was referring to the wetlands ordinance that he was talking about, that we can't enforce anything outside the city limits as of today.
Correct. As of today. That is correct.
That doesn't extend a mile and a half or three mile, whatever that thing is.
That is correct. The corporate limits, inside the corporate limits, you'd still be enforced that. Outside of the corporate limits, unless it was tied to building issuance, building code, permits, and inspections. There's a carve-out in the law that allows the city to continue to enforce those ordinances outside of the corporate limits in the police jurisdiction, subject to a potential probationary period from the county of two years.
Just to let you know how it's going to happen in the county going forward, if we have anything on scenic 98 or actually outside the city limits, we will still look at it from a wetland standpoint to find out if a building permit application is in a wetland. We're going to require them to provide us the documentation that they've got proper permits and approvals from the Corps of Engineers and ADM. And if someone is building in a wetland, that is a building code concern because you're building a foundation on what is typically kind of mucky ground. So we would have engineering requirements, which we do now anyway. But in terms of our ordinance not allowing you to fill absolutely anything in a yard, we've got many down on scenic 98 where there's a fill pad directly under the house. The rest of the yard has to remain in a natural wetland state. That's what our ordinance calls for. With the new ordinance, if ADM or the Corps allow it, they can go in, topsoil it, you know, sod it like you would a normal yard.
So what you're saying, so you're saying that the county already has a wetland ordinance that's totally different from ours? Or now there is just no ordinance at all? People are wild, wild west with the wetlands?
To my understanding, the only thing the county has relates to their subdivision regulations when you're applying for a new subdivision. Does that sound right?
I don't know. I know they have been editing their regulations and ordinances and have been told that they have adopted something new, but I can't affirm that.
I would hope so. I hope what you just said is not true, Eric.
Well, from our standpoint, we spend a whole lot of time looking at wetland stuff because, you know, wetlands have a tremendous function here, especially with the amount of rain and water we get. It's a big deal for us.
No, I do understand. That's why I said I hope what you said is not true.
Yeah.
I hope the transition, somebody in the county has been talking to somebody in the city as far as our environmental board or our Mobile Baykeepers or some organization to where they're prepared for this day. I'm hoping, for the people's sake.
I agree.
And to muddy the waters even further, there are some wetland protections within the subdivision regulations. So that when someone comes in with a subdivision application, there are still some requirements when you're developing land or creating a subdivision. Those are slightly different than the standalone ordinance that Eric deals with on an individual basis for a building permit. And those will still be in play as long as we have the authority to have a planning jurisdiction and what that boundary is and the regulations that apply there, which as of today is two years unless we come with another agreement with the county.
I did want to let the council know that we have received correspondence from the county asking us to sign a memorandum of understanding between the county and the city. We have not signed that yet or returned anything to them. I have notified Hope Hicks, their attorney, and Matthew Brown, their planning director, that we are working on something and that we will try to get that to them in the next week or so. But I don't think we're the only municipality who has not returned anything.
And the agreement also will require planning commission approval and verification as well. So it'll be an agreement between the municipality, the county, and the municipal planning commission, assuming terms can be reached.
Okay.
I think, I hope so.
Appreciate the update.
Hope I didn't unnecessarily confuse some people trying to provide some insight there.
That ship sailed.
Are we ready for the triangle property discussion yet?
Are you ready, Greg?
Okay. All right, we switched gears earlier and we went to item number two. So if y'all are ready, we're going to jump in and have a discussion of the triangle property and recommendations from the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board.
I'll just start before Michelle gets up there. I just want to thank the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board and Councilman Martin for helping facilitate this process. It's been something we've been working on for a while and just really appreciate the effort they put into it. Thank you.
So you guys have talked about this before, correct?
Correct.
So what, I guess what, you know, for brevity's sake, like what do you need from me?
I think just allow the public to understand what we're working on, how the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board, what work you've been doing to get this process passed through and to get going as far as the triangle property is concerned.
Okay, great. The Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board has been very active with this because it seems like it's a win-win-win for everyone and because the city's had the property since the litigation, whenever that was. So we have broken it down to how it'll probably play out for everybody's sake. And that was, has to do with the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation as well. It's our understanding that they repeatedly, like when they deed stuff back to the city, it's usually for public spaces or parkland. So that's our understanding. And I've talked to some people at the Single Tax to that effect. So how we laid it out is that the first thing that the city would do would probably quit claiming it over to them. And then the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board would work with them to try to get some deed restrictions in that deed when they convey it back to the city as parkland.
And I think that'll all be a simultaneous event.
Okay.
Sitting at the tables, Fairhope deeds it to them, then they deed it right back to Fairhope.
Perfect. Great.
All that negotiation will take place.
Yes. Okay, good. So that's how we foresee that. And we have a list, I don't know if that's been provided to the council, of possible deed restrictions. And we might not get all of them, but it's something to talk about when we get to that point. It's in their packet. Okay, great. So we will try to get in as many of those as possible because the Environmental Advisory Board consists of lawyers, scientists, and a good range of people that have input. So that's how we think that would play out. And I think that you guys also have controlling statutes in the state of Alabama that dictates, like, once you create this park, it'll be a park forever and ever. Did you guys get those? Everybody understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what Michelle is talking about, she's saying there's been a precedent set in constitutional law that allows a deeded land that's considered parkland for a single taxes concern, that that holds ground perpetuity-wise. It's been tested.
Yeah. If you dedicate a park via resolution in the state of Alabama, and it's got, you know, that makes it a park. And then you'd have to have a referendum vote to change that. So that's how that works in Alabama.
Vote of the people?
Hmm?
Referendum vote of the people?
Correct. Yes.
To change it.
To change it.
That'd be fair enough.
Yeah.
Answers that argument.
Hmm?
Hundred years from now.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. I mean, so if it's something different, if they feel differently, they can do it. I mean, nobody likes the rule, you know, perpetuity. And then there's all the lawyers in the room. There's rules against perpetuity that nobody quite understands still. So yes, a hundred years from now, if it's, you know, if the public thinks otherwise, we'll not be here, but they'll vote on it and do what they want. So, and hopefully, it'll be for the betterment of the city. There's one thing that the council has to discuss, though, too, like when that simultaneous transaction, and you guys might already know the answer, but part of that development agreement with the Dias family, when that happened in 2000, whenever it was, we have to talk to them about what they want to name the park. Or if we have an idea, we have to get the living heirs' consent about that. So that's something else to consider. And we always refer to it as a Dias triangle, and it might stay that way. But we should get their consent on that because that development agreement and all that stuff's also recorded, so.
And just to add to what Michelle said, I have talked to Single Tax, and I've sent them the same documents that y'all have so they can go ahead and start addressing that as a board. If they have any heartburn over anything that's in there, they can come back. But at some point in time in the near future, we'd like to, you know, get this on the agenda for y'all to pass a resolution and then start that negotiation, I guess, back and forth with Single Tax.
And any further conversation about management plan from a forestry perspective?
So tonight, the boundary survey is on the agenda. And, you know, the triangle, there's the Triangle Conservancy Group that we have has donated $35,000 to the city to help with some of this planning. We were hopeful that we could find a topo in the previous PUD. We have not been able to find that. I've gone back to the engineer's office, who, actually, he is a guy. His son has his records. We have been able to find something, a partial something from like 1970 some odd, so, or the 60s, but nothing official that we have. So we are moving forward with boundary survey. Trey Genright from Jade Consulting has a new technology he's using with drones that he would like to explore for the topo because the cost came in pretty high. It was close to $250,000 for a tree survey, a topo, and a boundary survey. So tonight on the agenda is just the boundary survey at $16,000. The tree survey, I'm exploring some options. I have my sticky net right here to possibly get with Auburn, maybe a Boy Scout group. Some of it's already been done in a report by Gina Todia.
Yes.
But we, but I do think that Auburn could probably help us come up, get their forestry program, our urban design, to come down and help us with some of the tree inventory. So that will be, you know, the next step.
And the tree survey was also identifying the species as well.
It was.
So that's a big deal.
Yeah. So we really do, I mean, want to move forward with boundary. And eventually, we'll do the topo. That'll probably come up in the next month or so on the council agenda.
Anything else?
No, I was gonna mention, yes, Gina did a good job with, like, baseline documentation of what's out there. So I think Auburn would be a great solution as an Auburn Tiger, so.
Absolutely.
Oregle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
And it seems like this, uh... Yep, sorry. I was skewed up closer.
It's bigger than the mic, sorry.
Yeah. Trying to avoid it just since I sound, sound sort of allergy prone. But I think the plan to deed the Single Tax and then put restrictions in place and deed it back is a good in-between from the city just operating it as a park on its own or conservation easement is kind of splitting the difference. Not perpetual, but also more restrictive than something that couldn't just be changed by, with a new council. All right, Mr. Johnson, ADA transition plan.
Yes, thank you, Council President and Council. And Hunter's gonna assist me on the computer part of this. But, you know, just to kind of give you a quick update, as you know, five years ago in June, the city adopted its first ADA transition plan. Part of that plan is some regular updates, and five years have passed in a very quick period of time. And as you know, we've had some interaction with the Department of Justice and Federal Highway, and they made some observations about our original plan that they thought could be better. And so this is the draft of the update plan. I will do, I do want to recognize that we kind of formed a working team within the city. Hunter Simmons, Eric Cortinas, Jessica Walker, John Thomas is our right-of-way inspector, Chris Ambry, who is with Hunter's team and GIS, myself, and of course, Mayor Sullivan has been part of that, too, is to try to start making this plan all that it can be and move forward. And what is different from what we did in 2016, we've set some key objectives in this plan to try to address, not necessarily deficiencies, but areas that could be better. One was a better process of record-keeping and public comments and/or grievances. For whatever reason, the law is very specific that there has to be an ADA coordinator by name, named within the plan, and that person is, or persons are ultimate responsible overseeing the implementation plan. But in a city structure, as you know, anything that is of official nature, such as a claim, a grievance, whatever, should come through the city clerk. So there's a permanent record-keeping. That is what our city clerk there, you know, she is the keeper of the city reference, of records. And so one of the things that, to make sure that that process has a paper trail that goes with it, even though we, the grievance form ultimately is directed to the ADA coordinator, it is via and through the office of the city clerk. So that's a big change, is meaning this is who you turn this into, or this is who you take this grievance comment or complaint to. So there's a very permanent and solid record there. Another complaint was the exposure and accessibility of the plan and documents, and that's one of our goals that we're gonna kind of hit at, is a little bit more prominent on the website, as well as from 2016 to today, social media is a much bigger presence. We have a Facebook page that people regularly use and interact with. We have the Everbridge notification system. So we have a way to make this plan much more electronically accessible. Updating and maintaining self-evaluation data via ARC GIS spatial database, and that's what Hunter's gonna demonstrate in a minute. We kind of ended up with a bunch of static information, and we didn't do anything with it. And part of this process and update, we have been able to claw back and recover all that beautiful electronic data. And Hunter and his people have put it into an accessible form electronically in a geospatial database. And ultimately, you're gonna see the kind of beta results of that. And here's the key thing is, is developing and publishing an interactive self-evaluation map from the ARC GIS geodatabase. In the original plan, if you go onto our website, you pull up a PDF map of the whole city that has, looks like it has a piece of the MOPS, but you can't really see what it's telling you. Whereas our goal is to produce a map, much like when you use Google Maps, you can zoom in to whatever feature you want to see and do. And so Hunter has the map pulled up, and if you look in the report, it's pretty self-explanatory. Green is good, red is not so good, and yellow is somewhere between good and not so good. But this is, this is the areas that we, our plan is saying we have to address and look at. And Hunter, I'm gonna kind of let you take it. And he's gonna show you, ultimately our citizens will be able to go right on our website, click the link to this map, and be able to look in their neighborhood or any street and see, not only it shows you the sidewalks, it shows you every element of sidewalks, the ramp, the crossings, et cetera. And what we did see in 2016 and what we received in that data, it looked at what happened at the time. And just to show you a little bit about how things change so fast, what you saw on the, what you see on the map right now highlights the sidewalks that were in place, and then in blue where we envisioned sidewalks, but they were non-existent. Just a quick few years, and you can notice what changed there. So Twin Beach, all the way down to the soccer fields, we did not have sidewalks. Those are now in place. And what we haven't done a good job at is showing our work. There has been many improvements made throughout the city. Many of these non-compliant issues fixed with public works, with new subdivisions, new projects, and a lot of those have not been shown. So that's one of the big targets we're looking, or in the process of right now, is updating the data that we received in 2016. There are details provided within here. If we just go down and click into a post here that's for photos, as you can see, there's data there, what type of materials, what the non-compliant issue is, how it was coordinated, and it includes photos of the potential problem. We can turn those green as we fix things. So photos of an issue that was non-compliant that we've made compliant has been fixed. And we can quickly produce analytics each year that will show what has been done and what we've brought into compliance to report back to the federal guidances that are generating these plans across the nation. Just to kind of show you the scope, I'm gonna zoom out real quick. That was just around one area, but as you can see, there is data around our city, you know, and this is miles of sidewalks, miles of, and hundreds of points of data collected showing where we are compliant and where we need to focus some attention, both in planning for pedestrian circulation and fixing what we have.
Thank you, Hunter.
So, you know, that was a big key element, is that there was an observation, our map really did not tell a potential user what was really going on as well. I think we're gonna resolve that because this is a living map. And I do want to tell you, and I can't, I can't express how important this is, Hunter and his team now, they have possession of all this, they maintain all this. So as soon as we go and fix a ramp, all we have to do is communicate that information to his team, and it will, it'll get updated in real time. So just as the planning and zoning map that you can interact with on our website, this will work the same way. When information is updated, it's real time, meaning the next time somebody goes there, if that change has been made, then it's reflected in there. And we're excited about that. Another simple objective is we've got to update who are the city officials responsible. There was, the two names listed in the 2016 report are no longer with the city. In this case, we had a long discussion, and I don't know if Eric and I lost the, but Eric Cortinas, as well as myself, are, will, is listed as the ADA coordinators for the city in this update report. Provide a more defined barrier removal priorities, short-term goals and objectives. That's the one thing that we still working on in his, with the information that now Hunter has control of. You know, again, the priorities have always been those elements and infrastructures that serve public facilities are number one, schools and medical facilities, followed by the high-use areas, such as the Central Business District and things of that nature. Because there's a limited amount of dollars, and when you think about this, do you spend the dollar on the sidewalk that serves thousands of people? Or do you spend that same dollar fixing the ADA compliancy on a cul-de-sac that has three houses on it? That doesn't sound fair, but again, it is serving, it is reducing the potential for risk to the maximum number of people. And as you know, that, our public facilities, those leading to parks and public buildings and libraries and things of that nature, to medical facilities and schools, and then our Central Business District is, continues to be our priority there. Here's the part that we've speculated, and it's gonna take your involvement, and that is a larger financial commitment to the scheduled barrier removal. Just so you know, the 2016 plan said that we would commit $50,000 a year. In 2016, the estimate of bringing us full into compliance was $8.6 million. If we spent $50,000 a year for five years, we potentially knocked a quarter million dollars off that 8.6 million. Problem is, we all know that construction costs have gone up probably more than a quarter million dollars on that. So we're still probably exactly where we were or further away than that. And I haven't really told the mayor this, but I, and Kim this, and they may, they may certainly do their looks. But I think that my wish would be that at least we double that amount, starting in the 2022 budget for targeted ADA improvements. And then finally, I think the part that we've done a good job on, but we need to continue, that's enhancement of staff training and familiarity with adopted standards and guidelines. John Thomas and I recently completed through the continuing education program in Auburn, a designing for accessibility. Eric has hosted twice ADA training, not only for city staff, but for constructors and designers. And I think that we need to make, make it our goal, at least once a year, there's an opportunity for training on that. So that's kind of the nutshell of what this update entails. Where do we go from here? Well, one, we will have to put this out for any public comment for a period of time. But my goal would, for a couple weeks out there in a draft form, and then possibly come back to you a month from now at the last meeting in August for a resolution to adopt the updated plan. And we do at least want to add into the appendix kind of a short-term achievable goals of targeted remaining items and in those categories that we discussed, that serve public facilities, high-traffic areas, schools, medical facilities, and things of that nature. And we're talking about just a ramp that's compliant, but it's just missing the truncated domes, things that are, can get done in a pretty timely manner, but get us credit for what we've done. The part that we reference in here, and this is part of that, we're still putting all this information together because we also are gonna share this with Federal Highway and Department of Justice, and for their comments as well in that same comment period. But credit to you, y'all know, we've done ADA improvements out here on section now in three locations. Church Street, almost a quarter million dollars of that $5 million project is just ADA improvement. So we're getting a pretty big check on the box there. But it is a necessary program, and we're just here for your comments, questions, and you will see it again in a formal thing for a resolution to kind of put this update in place for the next five years. Any questions?
Yes, sir. I've got a question. Is there a date that we are supposed to be virtually completely compliant, or is this more of a, as long as our process is improving and we're improving year over year, moving in the right direction, and we, avoiding scrutiny?
It depends who you ask, Councilman. I don't know if you noticed, I'm not ironic that today is the 31, 31st anniversary of the passing of the ADA Act. And there is no doubt that when administrations change, sometimes priorities change there on the national level. And there is some information out there that there may be a stronger push on this, meaning that they mandate, you know, if you estimate you have X, you have to do a certain percentage of X per year. I don't have access to that. But the, basically, the Code of Federal Regulations says we have to have a plan in place, and we have to be moving toward that. And understand, the, one of the key elements that is in the act is when we, and it's been defined, it used to be, we defined it as capital improvements to a right-of-way, we had to address ADA. But now they have added resurfacing to that category. So when we resurface the street, we've got to evaluate it. So ultimately, you know, every street's gonna get resurfaced probably in the next 30 years in this city. And that probably means that by that time, we're much closer than we are today. But again, there is not a drop-dead date. It is as long as we have a plan, we're following the plan, and we can show progress.
Okay.
Perfect. Any questions? All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This time, I think Lee Lawson's in the audience. There you are, Lee. Lee wants to come address us about the EDA grant opportunity for the K-1 Center.
Thank you. Councilman Connors, other councilman, I'll be brief. On Friday, the Economic Development Administration released six Notice of Funding Opportunities as it relates to the American Rescue Plan. These are the funds that I was before you about three months ago, acknowledging that, hey, that it's in the American Rescue Plan. The administration and Office of Management and Budget and the Economic Development Administration finally got around to outlining those Notice of Funding Opportunities. There were six separate notices released on Friday. Of those notices, the Economic Adjustment and Assistance Notice is the one that we hatch, and the K-1 Center will qualify in for construction and non-construction-related projects for certain things like entrepreneurship, innovation, and new job creation. There are, in the other funding opportunities, there are Indigenous Peoples, specific money for Indigenous Peoples, coal communities, communities affected by the Obama administration and other administrations' reduce of coal use and coal-fired power plants. There is research universities, specific money for research universities that we don't qualify for. So this is the area that EDA Representative Michael Mills said, hey, this is where this project qualifies. Again, 500 million in that Economic Adjustment Assistance. There are six EDA regions across the country. We fall into the Atlanta region. So of that 500 million, 200 million will actually be directed straight for coal communities. So leaving 300 million to split up amongst those six regions. So leaving 50 million for our region, eight southeastern states that we will be in the running for. We're asking for, again, $3.125 million to renovate the K-1 Center for Hatch, the technology entrepreneurial development initiative run by our foundation, partnered with the City of Fairhope Coastal Alabama Community College and BBVA Compass and the University of Alabama. You know, due to the, you know, our county's still, or the country's still being considered under a disaster declaration for COVID, the normal match on an EDA grant is a 50-50 split between the applicant and the feds. Due to us being still considered under a disaster declaration because of COVID, it is an 80-20 match, 80 on the federal side, 20 on the applicant's side. So the city will be looking to put up a 20% match, getting 80 cents on each dollar of that 3.125 million. So I'm here to, again, address you and tell you, hey, the timing is now. It is a first-come, first-served basis. The EDA is doing two webinars this week, one tomorrow and one Thursday, that our team, Jessica Sawyer, Stacy McKean, and then our team will be listening into to make sure we've got the right things in our application ready to go, which it's pretty much teed up. I'll put some final touches on it this week based on just now getting the funding opportunity released and what's the details in the funding opportunity. But wanted to be before you so we can be ready to respond to that Notice of Funding Opportunity and get our application in. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me as it relates to not only the application, the funding opportunity, and/or what we plan to do.
And council members, we have a resolution to add to the agenda tonight that basically authorizes the submission of this grant. So again, it'd be two and a half million EDA grant, 625 from the city for a total of 3125. So once we, once we authorize that, assuming we authorize that tonight, and y'all are ready to submit, I mean, I know you've been working on it for a while, what kind of timeframe before you'd be able to submit, and what kind of timeframe, I mean, I guess you don't really know how quickly they'll turn around.
Our goal is, if approved tonight, within the next week, we'll submit our application. We're waiting also for the, our EDA rep to give his final kind of comments back on our application. He's had it for a couple weeks. You know, Jessica Sawyer and our team are working just kind of final touches. We've got everything really in place. Honestly, it's a first-come, first-served basis, so we hope to be really the front of the line. It then goes to the Funding Committee, which is a regional funding committee based out of the Atlanta Office of the EDA. So they'll wait for enough applications to pull up, and then they'll send that first batch through the Funding Committee to then be evaluated. We'll then hear back if there's any, you know, holes in the application or any further documentation needed. So, I mean, we're real hopeful. I mean, they have the money, they want to get this money out, just like all the other, you know, disaster money that's been spent via these large federal appropriation bills. They want to put the money out on the street. So, you know, again, it's a competitive environment, so don't hear me say because we're first in the line, we're gonna go get it. But again, we feel like we have a good project in place. We feel like we're addressing a need to diversify the jobs in our service, heavily-service-based community here. And we feel like Hatch has enough of a runway now where we've had enough entrepreneurs come through our center and enough active engagements with entrepreneurs where we feel like we have a good track record to prove to the EDA that this is a worthwhile project for them to fund.
Appreciate that. Any... Anybody have any other questions for Lee?
No, let's get it done.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Pushing this forward.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor.
I just wanted to mention, too, that we have also applied for, or not applied for, we were asked to submit for a grant through Congressman Jerry Carl's office. So we did do that. We were one of 10 projects that had moved forward, and the project that we submitted was the match for this grant. So I had notified their office that the Notice of Funding has come through, that we're going to apply for the grant. So that's, just so you know, from a money standpoint, hopefully, if this all happens, we can actually, you know, get our money back.
Perfect. I saw that. I wasn't sure if I could say anything about that or not, so thank you.
Let me add one more thing. The mayor has done a great job of keeping our federal delegation apprised of this opportunity. And so, I mean, she's done great work in making sure that Congressman Carl, Senator Tuberville, and Senator Shelby in their offices are fully aware we're going to be submitting so we can get their backing and their support. So we've got great federal support from our delegation due to the mayor's work. So again, we just make sure you know that, and appreciate all your support, and we'll push it forward.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Mayor. Next up, committee updates. Councilman Martin?
You heard from the Fairhope Environmental Board. They're also working on the colony, what they call the colony property over there on 13 in Twin Beach. We were talking about putting the pond, but they came up with a couple of things that we need to work on. Nothing new as far as rec is concerned right now. Still working on that as far as private entities and recreation. That's all I have.
Councilman Robinson?
I don't have any.
No, Councilman Bean?
No report.
All right. I don't have a report tonight either. Next item would be department head updates, and when you come up for your update, if you have any agenda items, we can go ahead and cover those when you come up for your update. That way, we won't have to have a separate agenda meeting. All right. Whoever wants to come up, first come, first served.
Don't be bashful. Don't be bashful.
All right, Jason.
They like to be called.
Yeah, I'm trying to cut down how much talking I got to do tonight.
Turn your hearing aids up.
Try to turn them up.
Jason, thank you very much, by the way, for the ride around the other day with Councilman Robinson and myself. We really learned a lot, enjoyed it. I appreciate you taking the time to show us around and some of the projects we have going on. It was very informational, and I know you've got a lot going on, so again, appreciate your time.
Appreciate y'all's for going with us. A couple of quick updates before we get into agenda items. We unluckily thought we had our problem resolved, but we do not on Greeno. The main break we had last week was north of 34. We put all the air relief south of 34. So we sent this pipe off, it split, bail to bail. There was no reason for it. We had no issues. We looked at SCADA, there was no surges, no pressure spikes or anything. So, you know, we kind of, I think the next step is send the pipe off to see if it is an issue with the pipe. So hopefully, I'll have something to report on that in the coming weeks. And we did have another main break Saturday on 181, and that's in that area that we're talking about replacing. Be south of Twin Beach on 181 from Stone Creek to County Highway 34. We've got a few hurdles with ALDOT. They're not wanting us to put it back on that side of the road. They're wanting us to cross the road with it. But with that short section, that's really not an option for us. So they're trying the horse trade and saying that if we'll put it on the, if we go ahead and put it on the east side, they won't pay for reimbursement down the road when they decide to widen that section. So there's still some things we've got to work out with ALDOT on that. So we're working to try to get that project moving. Y'all have any questions for me before we go to the agenda items?
No, sir, not at all.
We have, the first one is Goodwood Mills and Kaywood, number nine. That's the Lakewood lift station that we talked about. It's just authorized.
And it's going to be the--
May I negotiate?
Does the fee schedule?
Yeah. But it's going to be also with the American Rescue Plan.
Yes, ma'am.
That one, the valid lift station.
So the funding for this will come from the American Rescue Plan that we discussed at last meeting.
As, like a reimbursement?
Correct. Well, we already have the money in the bank.
Okay.
We have a little over $900,000.
Okay.
We'll probably end up having to add some to this because of all the force maimer we've got to do. And I believe we're at number 15. That's just the approval of the NOT to exceed $30,000 a year for our home-call engineering with SC Civil. And it is a budgeted item. And 16, if you all remember, when we did the tours, we talked about treatment plant three and the new wellhead, 3-11, add three wells, do the third well at that side, which will increase capacity. Just adding that well will get us to right at $4 million gallons a day. With the NOT to exceed $440,000, that's an estimated total on that project over three years, the rest of this year's budget, next year's, and then 2023, almost $5 million.
Because this is just the engineering portion?
Right.
Yes. This, you can't, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, but if this could have been done a few years ago, it would have been a lot cheaper, but y'all know what times are now.
Remind me of Plant Three again. I'm trying to, for some reason, I'm--
It was the one way out in the country.
33, when we went 33?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
The block property there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the terminology was a diamond in the rough.
That's right.
There you go.
Yes. Okay.
And that's all I have.
That's it? All right. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sir, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, just a couple of quick project updates. Twin Beach is moving along. The rain hasn't been our friend. It looks like we're going to have a relatively dry week. We have been corresponding with the schools, that their traffic pattern may be negatively affected. We're probably not going to have that road fully open or even possibly possibly open, but we're given the worst-case scenario. Jessica's been doing a great job coordinating between the schools and all other stakeholders. Our Little Oak and Section Street, we're meeting with a contract tomorrow to hopefully have a glide path. There's so little left to do to get it finished and hopefully get that corner planted by maybe the end of this week and call that one done. Because I know y'all hear from your constituents that it seems like everything takes forever. Just a couple of quick things on the agenda, number 11. We're asking you to reject and authorize us to rebid the Arts Alley. This probably has been the greatest reviewed bid in the history of the City of Fairhope.
It has taken a while.
Once, we ended up with eight potential bidders that attended the pre-bid, mandatory pre-bidding. We only received one bid. There was some cost anomalies in there, some certain items, and the bidder admitted that his subs didn't get numbers back to him, so they just threw a number they knew that would cover. The federal government, the FTA, Federal Transit, asked us to do some due diligence before we moved forward. We did have our independent cost entity review it, and they agreed that there were some costs that were, even with today's market, were out of line. And they asked us to attempt to contact the other potential bidders and find out why they failed to bid. Majority that did respond said they just had too much work and that they just weren't not in for it. So with that all said, Federal Transit, which money is backing this project, asked for this, and with the fact that we had some anomalies in a singular bid and some items in that bid that were a little out of line, that is the recommendation, and we will turn around and rebid. We've also found that there's a couple contract languages about responsibilities with coordinating stakeholders that was a little off-putting, and we softened that and shifted those responsibilities to the city side of the equation, but that's what that is about. Number 14 is supporting a recycling initiative. We've workedshopped this with you before, and I'm 100% supportive of this, and I think the mayor is, too. And that is with Baldwin County pursuing the option of establishing a MRF here in the county, which would benefit us all. Number 20 is the roof of the month program that we're in. This is the North Beach Pavilion. You will see in there that we are recommending to do the additive Alknif, meaning not to go back with asphalt shingles, but to put a metal roof on that, meaning that our insurance will cover the replacement cost of the asphalt, but we would, as a city, bear the additional upcharge to go with the metal. One, it's a better product for that location. Two, most of our parks have metal roofs in them, and that's our recommendation from a serviceability and maintenance standpoint. And finally, item 21, and this is, I'm going to take a short agenda item and make a long story out of it. Just real quick, going back in time, in FYI budget 2019, you generously budgeted for us to purchase a trash truck. We ended up getting into COVID, and there was concerns about cost and city budgets. So we, that truck had not entered into the manufacturing stream, and we had the ability to discontinue that purchase. Turn around to budget year 20, you rebudgeted a truck, we did make the order. That truck was, is not due to arrive any earlier than December of this year or possibly into January, February of 2022. Unfortunately, the asset that it's to replace, which we said we thought if we had to, could get another year or two out of it, is unit number 1093. It's a 2006 International, 15 years old. It had a catastrophic engine failure. It was going to be $17,000 just to patch it back together. We just could not justify putting that kind of money into a 15-year-old truck that we've gotten its full service life out of. Part of the discussion that I had with the mayor is, hey, can we at least inquire to our vendor about the potential to lease a truck until the new truck gets here in December? Would rather put that money toward leasing a vehicle than patching a vehicle, because we'd put $17,000 in it in December, put it on the line to GOV deals and get $12,000 for. That's, the math didn't add up. Contacted Sampson Equipment Company, and lo and behold, he says, boy, believe it or not, I have a truck that's going to be here in late July or in August, early August, that I had ordered for City X, and they now have canceled the order, but the truck was already manufactured, so I'm stuck with it. I would be glad to lease it to you, but I'd have to have a letter of intent that you would purchase it during your new budget year, and I'd apply 70% of your lease payments to the purchase. And my comment and discussion with the mayor and the treasurer, well, if we're going to bring that deal to you, can we just buy the truck and get 100% of any lease payments applied to it? So that's the story that I'm here to tell. We have a truck, freightliner chassis, what we've been ordered, has a Brussels Hog knuckle boom on it, which is a little heavier duty than the Petersons that we buy, but it's a very, very good product. It's within the price range of the truck we already ordered that we're waiting in December. So what we're asking you tonight is the opportunity to go ahead and purchase this truck, kind of get an advance on the FY22 budget. That truck comes out of that budget, and we replace a truck immediately that needs to be replaced because we're behind on route, and we know we have a future truck coming December, January, and we're done for a couple, three years on the trash end of things. And as you know, the availability of equipment is becoming a problem. And the fact that there's one out there that we know we can get and get in a relatively timely manner, and the price is under a Sourcewell contract, it's just an opportunity that we needed to bring to you and see if we could get your blessing on. And that's the long story for the short agenda item.
So we're getting two trucks?
Yes, sir. You've already, we've already purchased a truck--
We've got one that's coming in December.
--that's coming December, January.
Now we're trying to get a second one and use the 2022 budget.
We have in the 22 budget right now a purchase of a truck. If we can make this happen tonight, then that just comes out of the budget because that gets consumed.
That makes sense. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
I've got a question, Richard. Real quick. The MRF, right now, we're still in limbo with contonment, correct? As far as our pickup. But what we're thinking is, is to create our own material recovery facility in the county. So we're just going to participate with the county in trying to help them, along with Daphne and Foley and all the others surrounding areas, to create our own material recovery facility, as opposed to paying somebody the fees that they're asking. Is that what we're thinking?
That is correct, and as I understand, the county's intent, it would be like a cooperative, meaning we'd have skin in the game, meaning that if at the end of the year, let's say the MRF cleared $50,000, and 10% of the volume that gone through had come from the City of Fairhope, we would then have a $5,000 credit, okay? So that's the idea. But on the inverse of that is if Recycles are not selling real well and they have a $50,000 deficit, we would have a $5,000 vig if we were representing 10% of the stream. And I think the thing is, we would rather pay ourselves than pay a third party that has no skin in the game. I mean, ECUA is taking care of a Scamby County fart, and that's okay, and they address it as they're doing us a favor, but we don't have any ownership. We don't have any commitment.
I agree 100%. I think it's a great idea personally.
But this is probably three years away.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I'm just making it, I'm just, yep.
But it's at least a Plan B for the future.
That's exactly right. I think it's the right thought process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, how you doing today?
Good. How about you?
Doing all right.
I'll keep this quick. I don't have anything on the agenda, but just to update you, the ADA ramping is coming along slowly with all the weather we've had, but we're going to stay on top of it and try to get it finished up before the first football game. I have put on hold the construction of the new baseball fields at Valana, just due to the weather's really hampered us and what we're able to do. And my concern was, if we got the fields in place, I wouldn't have enough time to get parking ready for football. So we've put that on hold, so we will have that open field north of the pool available for parking for football season. As soon as football season's over with, we will hit it hard to get the fields in place, and I think we will have ample time to get them constructed over the winter and have them ready for spring baseball season.
So that area will be available in October?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The, I checked on the playground for Rotary Youth. It is currently being manufactured, and they anticipate being here to install it sometime in October.
Very good. Definitely asking.
Any questions for me?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connor, I know you've got some items, all, let's see, five, six, seven, eight? Is that it?
All right. Two things real quick. The CitizenServe online permitting portal, we've been accepting certain types of permits. That has gone live as of today. We are accepting all permits on new construction, including heavy commercial, which we actually have a good bit of going on right now. And that is mandatory, that all permits will come in through that. And that also will include subdivision applications. So any new subdivisions, all your construction documents, everything will go through electronically. They'll be reviewed electronically by all of city staff. I have agenda item number 10, which is the selection of the ICC for the construction plan review for the reserve at Fairhope, which is the senior care facility that's up there at the corner of Valana and Greeno. They're on the Planning Commission agenda for Monday night? Yes. And I have been hearing from the architect for the last two weeks, when can I get my plan review? I said after you get approval at Planning Commission. So I want to have this in place and ready to go, so as soon as they are, they're good, then we can send this off for review. This is just, it's probably the biggest building we've ever had in Fairhope, it's going to be, or next to Thomas Hospital. It's about 175,000 square feet, and it's quite detailed. So I would like to send that off for review and let the folks at ICC handle that for us. They've done things in a very timely manner. We've already gotten the comments back for the USA Matt Building, and so I've sent that to the architect. They're going through the comments, they're revising. So it's been a good process, and this is a pass-through account. I want to make sure you remember, we pay this because we have an account with the ICC, but the fees are paid by the plan review fees we collect under our normal ordinance, and it is, it's more than enough to cover this cost.
Very good. Thank you. Number five's not you, is it?
No, five's not me. I do just a couple of updates, and I want to first, you know, support that. We've had four, six subdivisions come in for pre-construction meetings in the last two weeks. The volume that both building and us are seeing right now, and some of those were approved three years ago, so seeing them all coming in at one time is a challenge for us to balance. So help, getting that outside of review is incredibly important. The planning department will begin Thursday on their implementation portion of Citizen Serve, so our goal is to, within approximately six months, we'll be live and accepting our applications via an online portal. We have also had a kickoff meeting for the comp plan, the third and final of our existing restore projects, and that meeting went well. It was kind of a get-to-know-one. It was kind of a get to know one another. Thank you, Councilman Martin, for being there. Council's presence is incredibly important through this project. You should see toward the end of September, some appointment or some schedules on how we will proceed and public meetings we will engage in, and any input will be welcome. That's what the team's working on now, kind of sharing phone numbers and contacts, getting data together, figuring out the tools used to collect feedback. And we'll, we'll hope to kick those things off toward the end of September, early November, or early October. All of the things that I have on tonight's agenda are public hearings. I'm going to set records tonight. I'm getting through this. I'm not talking much about them. They're very quick cases. So if y'all have any specific questions about those, I can answer them now or we can wait till till those agenda items.
Or does anybody have any? Does anybody have any questions on items six, seven, and eight right now over here for Hunter? I mean, you can always wait till later. Okay. Wait till. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jeremy, I know you've got a few on here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. How are you guys tonight? So first off, an update on Valana, that substation, we energized it, I wonder where we at, what it's saying, Monday? We energized it last week. And that transformer was humming nicely. If you guys swing by there, stick your head out the window, you can barely hear that thing. So I'm hoping that's how Morphe be also, or I know that's how it'd be. So very quiet. They've come a long way in 40 years making transformers, but unfortunately, we were not able to put all the load back on that station to get everything back to normal, the way we feed things normally. Two of the three regulators had to issue brand-new regulators. So I got in touch with the company where I'm from, they're going to send a tech. I was hoping that'd be this week because of how high the, how hot the temperatures are and the heat and everything. But it's looking like it's going to be August the 4th through 6th. So I think we'll, we'll be able to survive. If something does happen, we are able to shift it over to there and just bypass the regulator. So anyways, yes, what do I have on here? I've got a truck, I know. Numbers up.
Probably 12, 13.
What's that?
12, 13.
Uh, yes, you definitely can.
Levelization.
13, what, what is that?
That's AMI.
Oh, that's AMI. Census. Yeah, you're probably going to touch on that too. I will. Maybe too, but I think you.
Yeah. And you can't really talk about levelization.
They probably know way more about that than I do, but.
That's great.
And they speak way more elegantly than I do.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, let's see. So number 16, nope.
22.
17, 22. Y'all got me all over the place. 22, yeah. So that, you guys know, as everybody said, how hard it is to get vehicles. We had a 550 in the budget for this year. We were able to talk with a gentleman who had one coming, and we was able to have him hold this, beg and plead him to, to let us, to hang on that till we come to you guys about getting it. It is over budget, but the reason for that is we're going to buy the truck for 45 later, put a bet on it next year. Well, as you know, we got to get what we can get, and this one has a bet on it already, so it's about six grand. So we're probably about three, three grand over budget. So of course, with the price of everything, that's not bad, I guess. So that's that. And that will be for pulling the board rig. We've got one to pull one truck, one rig, one truck to pull one rig, and this truck to pull the, the other one, so we can get some more work done for the guys, be more efficient.
And how about 17 with the distributions?
Yes, 17. I know you guys are here, tired to hear me talk about this, but as I mentioned before, we've done a capacity study, which told us we need to upgrade our substations, which is what we're in the process of doing. I've been saying for years that, you know, 40, 50 years ago, when we put the conductors up in the air, we had smaller houses, there wasn't much growth going on. You know how much has grown in the past several decades? And we're getting, I know there's going to be conductors out there that's really being stressed out, and we don't want them on the ground causing any type of problems for us. And this, this, this system study will allow them to come in, look at our loads, look at our growth, look at potential loads, and also be able to tell us which conductors are not the right size and which sides need to be changed out, which our guys can do a lot of. If it's, if it's big areas that I'm aware of, we might have to contract that out later. But that's what this system study is all about. Like I said before, the substation is the heart, the conductors is the veins, the arteries that pump the blood. If they collapse, it's not going to be good. So you want to, we want to be able to get those, get the right conductor sizes. So that's about the best way I can explain it.
So Jeremy, when they do this study, have they done a study on, on the feasibility of these studies? Meaning, how much money do these studies save a city or municipality?
I don't know. I'd have to ask the engineer that, but I can get you an answer.
I don't think the issue is saving money. I think it is being proactive.
Which is what I'm saying. Saving money. So efficiency-wise, if we're more efficient, we save money. And so that's what this is all about, right? Being more efficient.